Welcome. You are tuned into Community Chat. My name is Kevin Tocchi and I will be your host for this particular segment. What do we do here at Community Chat? Well, the idea is to share information with you, whether it's a community event, issues that are happening, maybe even chat with folks who are seeking office. So it happens that today's conversation, we're going to be speaking with a gentleman who is seeking your vote come the September primary, September 3rd, believe it or not, for Plymouth County Commissioner. We have Mr. Scott Vekki joining us. Mr. Vekki?
Thank you for having me, Kevin.
You've got it. Let's kind of start things off. Tell folks a little bit about yourself.
Well, I'm currently a practicing attorney. I focus on bankruptcy and immigration and I just retired as a police sergeant and I actually, I still work part-time as an EMT. I work on the ambulance part-time just to stay involved in emergency services and keep helping people. So the attorney stuff kind of is a slow roll. You know, you've got to develop your client base and all that. So it's good to have, you know, a regular check coming in while I'm getting that rolled up. I just retired from the Plymouth Police Department. Hit the great numbers of 33 years of service with age 54 and that was time to go. I retired on my birthday in December. I rolled right into working, working my own, getting my own law practice pulled up and then I get, like I said, I got that job working on the ambulance part-time. I'm also a retired gunnery sergeant of Marines. When we returned from Fallujah, Iraq in 2006, I came back early because I got sick, but I was retired. And basically, my entire life has been about service, serving my country, serving our community in some aspect or another. And I'm looking to continue my lifetime of service as the next Plymouth County Commissioner.
Okay. Talk to us about any offices that you've held or any different committees that you serve on or have served on?
I've been an elected or appointed official in the town of Plymouth for the last 15 years. I'm currently the vice chair of the Plymouth Redevelopment Authority. The Plymouth Redevelopment Authority goes all the way back to the late 50s where it was, it was formed to eliminate blighted areas of Plymouth and redevelop them into productive and useful and more visually appeasing areas. There isn't really a lot of blight left in the town of Plymouth, so we focus more on affordable housing. And right now, we're in the process of building an affordable house with Habitat for Humanity for a needy family, a novel approach. We obtained a tax title property from the town and we went into partnership with Habitat because Habitat has the experience to build an affordable house. And I'm really looking forward to that. I'll be out there with my Bob the Builder hat, banging nails and stuff. So, but in addition to serving as the vice chair on the Plymouth Redevelopment Authority, I was elected as a, which is an elected position. I was elected to the Charter Commission. We, that ended about a year ago. We went through our town's charter line by line by line, made some recommendations that went to the voters. Unfortunately, that charter wasn't approved, but it really was educational in how local government is formed and how local government operates. Like I said, it's kind of, kind of like reading your stereo instructions, but the town charter is an important document. I was also appointed to the Plymouth Historic District Commission, where I served three years as an alternate member, which is an important thing, keeping downtown Plymouth in keeping with its historic nature. I had previously been appointed to a Charter Review Committee, which was an appointed position, and I was an elected town meeting representative in Plymouth. So for the last 15 years, I've served the town of Plymouth in some elected or appointed capacity.
Okay. So, I have to ask this, and I think this is something that's probably asked of anybody who is running for this position. What does a county commissioner do? What is a county commissioner? What do they do? And probably the third part of that question is, why are you running for it?
That's actually probably the best question out there because in our part of the country, all the municipalities touch each other. So there's no unincorporated territory. Whereas if you go down south or out west, you could leave Abington and drive for 25 or 30 miles before you hit Whitman or another, Brockton or another adjoining community. And all that land in between is called unincorporated territory. And that's what makes the county the larger form of government in other parts of the country. Well, they'll operate schools, DPWs, police departments, all that. But up here, everything touches. So it's an invisible layer of government. And the easiest way to think about them is to analogize them to a board of selectmen. So basically, they're a board of selectmen that covers 27 communities and they function identical to a board of selectmen, whereas they're part-time government. They meet every other Thursday down in Plymouth at the county administration building. There's a full-time county administrator, like you have a town manager. There's the county treasurer. This, you know, there's, there's a whole office full of people that, just like you would have at town hall, that, you know, take care of the day-to-day functionings of the county. And then like a board of selectmen, they come in and they're, they're the executive branch and they make all the decisions and they set policy for those of the people to follow. Why am I running for county commissioner? When, when I was a police officer, it's almost impossible to be involved in, you know, like a board of selectmen or some other significant policymaking because there's, you have to recuse yourself from any, you know, a lot of things. So I gravitated towards the county level of government. And I've always been intrigued by the county level of government because they, they have the ability to do so much for all 27 communities. And I'm running to continue my lifetime of service as your next county commissioner. I left right after high school when I turned 17, joined the Marine Corps, four years of active duty, served in my country. I came back, I was hired as a corrections officer in Suffolk County, then as a part-time police officer in Plymouth, then as a transit police officer, and then the last 27 years I spent in the town of Plymouth, 20 of them as a sergeant. So my entire life, you know, even up to today, has been about serving my country or our community. And now that I'm retired, for the most part, I'm still working, but it lets me pursue more altruistic endeavors, like serving as a county commissioner and trying to, you know, head the policy in the way that the constituents want it to go and do some serious, you know, progressive programs, like the animal shelter and I don't want to get ahead of myself, but, but I have some great ideas that the county can, can move towards.
Okay. Every level of government is usually a series of services that are provided for whatever, federal government's, the states, the states, it's the different communities, county, it's the membership, like you said, that there are 27 communities, you've got the city of Brockton and 26 towns. What are some of the services that Plymouth County offers to its membership?
Well, that's, is the invisible layer of government. Most people don't, don't see these things. However, there's some hugely important things. One is the Mayflower Municipal Healthcare Program. And most of the, of the towns in the county participate in the Mayflower Municipal Health Insurance. So their, the municipal employees can get their health insurance through the county. In addition to that, there's the county retirement system. The town of Plymouth has its own retirement system, but most of the towns participate in the county retirement system. So any of your municipal employees who retire, you know, they'll deal with the county retirement system. The, if you're fortunate enough to adopt a child or unfortunate enough like myself to get divorced, you need to go to the Registry of Probate. That's a county function. If you buy your house or refi a house or anything like that, you have to go down to the Registry of Deeds in Plymouth to file your deed, whether you're doing a homestead or like I said, just recording a deed, that's another county level function. So there's a whole host of things that they do that people just don't see or they don't know. Cause I would guarantee you that you know somebody who's a municipal employee that probably has their health insurance through the county or has their retirement system through the county. And, you know, it's much, you know, much like everybody else, you know, we're not going to refi if we're at 3% or lower, but there's, at some time, you'll probably need to go to the Registry of Deeds and search a title or something.
Okay. One of the things that I think the county has been able to hang its hat on is the funding that came through COVID first under the Trump administration. We had the CARES Act, then later, under Biden's administration, you had the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. And it's been, it's been hailed a success. How can the county build upon that success moving forward as ARPA is getting ready to sunset soon?
The, and that's the sad part about this all is, is it's about to end. The revenue stream is dried up. There's, there was, I was at the meeting the other day, they did approve some expenditures with some of the last bit of the money that's in there. And again, the reason why the county was able to do that is because the federal government looked and said county government, you know, around the country is a larger form of government. So we're going to, they're a good way to facilitate. And they did a good job. I commend them for what they've done. But with it sunsetting, we need to build on that success. We need to keep moving forward. We need to keep finding ways to help the 27 communities. And one of those, the best ways is through federal grants. There's a huge pool of federal grants that are out there. And what the county needs to do is it needs to continue working in partnership with the, all of the towns and say, hey, look, we found this grant. We're willing to help facilitate it. You know, is this grant something that the town of Abington wants to pursue? And now I actually did grant writing for a little bit when I was for the police department. You know, I was in charge of like the bulletproof vest grant and all that other stuff. So I'm familiar with the process. But if you, if you search federal grants, there's so many out there, you know, whether they're port security grants, which is one of the things that we were looking at in Plymouth before I retired, was to get some more equipment because Plymouth has a deepwater port in the Cordage. So basically, what the county needs is they need a full-time grant writer or to hire somebody that their job is just for, to seek out grants and see what grants are viable and partner with all of the 27 communities. Because there's a lot of, you know, whether you're in Marion or Hall or Plymouth, the county's a huge place. They all have different needs and there are different grants that fit their needs. But like I said, most, a lot of these towns, the smaller towns, they don't have the ability to have a grant writer or access to a grant writer. And that's where the county can build on the ARPA and CARE's success and continue to help as much as possible.
With any political race, there's its own set of issues. Are there any issues or is there an issue that's a part of this particular race?
Well, right, right now, the biggest issue is the, is the lease of the county farm. And that's actually, I was at the last commissioner's meeting last Thursday and it's, it's a huge issue because right now they're, well, I'll back up a little bit. A few years back, the county and the sheriff sued each other over who owned the county farm. So the sheriff occupies the farm and the county owns the farm. And around 2010, the sheriff's department was removed from the county and put in the office of transferred sheriffs. And that actually almost bankrupt the county. Plymouth County has always been viable. It's always been a good form of government, but when the sheriff got himself pulled out, he, he almost bankrupt what was left of the county. But they were able to get back on their feet and get moving. They're still recovering from that 14 years later. But the short version was, there's an arbitrator and he said, the sheriff occupies, he's the lesee, that the county is the lessor, they own the farm. And they established a five-year, $20,000 a year lease and said, at the end of this, figure this out. And, you know, this gives you five years to sort out what you're going to do at the end. The county last year was in a $900,000 deficit, which they made up through rainy day funds and all that other stuff. So, you know, like I said, they're solvent. You know, it's, it's, you know, you don't want to dip into the rainy day funds, but that is why they're there. So in the, in the shadow of this $900,000 deficit, they're trying to softball the sheriff at the same lease, the same, the same terms extended for another five years, with no attempt to determine the fair market value of the county farm with an agricultural restriction in place. They haven't reached out to real estate people. They haven't had an appraiser come in. They haven't done any of that. And to me, to just softball a lease to somebody, you know, for political purposes, is a disservice to the voters. It's a disservice to all the taxpayers in the county. The Registry of Deeds has unfunded positions. They're struggling to accomplish their function. So if, if you would determine fair market value, I'm not saying kick the sheriff off the farm. I think what he's doing down there works. The county itself doesn't have the personnel or the resources to manage that farm like it's being managed now, but he needs to pay his fair share. And if he wants to continue to occupy the farm, pay fair market value, take that money, use it to fund the important positions in the Registry of Deeds. And the Registry of Deeds is the primary revenue stream of the county. So if you want to bring more money in, you need to hire the people to do the work to bring the money in. So like I said, I'm not saying kick them off the farm. I'm saying determine fair market value and negotiate the lease with the best interests of the taxpayers in mind. You know, not what, you know, two, two people who voted a third person who wanted to tap the brakes on it, but not what these two people want to softball lease to the sheriff, you know, who's their friend. So that's the biggest issue right now.
It seems as though the county commissioners have had a history over the past few years, the past years of having skirmishes. Not only, you talk about the sheriff's department, but it's not, not, we forgot to mention the county woodlot, which, you know, has the commissioners and the county at odds with the town of Plymouth. How does, as someone, a new, a new person come into that equation to help be, smooth things over, to help resolve hard feelings between entities?
Well, that's, that's a perfect question is because somebody who was born at the Jordan Hospital in Plymouth, my, my ancestors go back to the, to the boat. I'm related to seven pilgrims. I did the lineage on it. The joke is, is which pilgrim was Vekki? So when the Mayflower left, they stopped in Italy, they picked him up. He was the cook. They don't talk about him too much. Just a joke. I go, like the Sawyer Bailey's go all the way back up to, I'm a member of the Mayflower Society, the Alden Society. So you don't get much more Plymouth than me, even though my last name, you know, doesn't appear to be very Plymouth-y. And as somebody who's been an elected or appointed, I have a track record in the town of Plymouth. And, you know, I actually had this discussion with some, some electeds the other day. I go, even if you don't like me, you know that my word is good. And you know that I'm not going to sugarcoat things, that I sometimes, that's one of my, my failings in life is, is I'm a little too brutally honest at times and I hurt people's feelings. But what you see is what you get. So no matter, no matter who it is in the town of Plymouth, they know that I am going to be fair and honest. And that's going to go a long way with having a county commissioner from Plymouth with this huge project that they're proposing on the woodlot. And for those people in Abington who don't know, it's what's called a 40R project. And a 40R is a smart growth project, which brings in money from the state. It's, it gives the town a leverage against 40B developments. But it also would provide the county with long-term revenue streams to continue to provide more services from the county. The project right now is kind of languishing. It hit a speed bump and kind of stopped. So I don't really know what the Boston South developers have, have in their, in their plans right now. But there's two things that need to happen with this project. You know, one is that it has to follow the master plan of the town of Plymouth, just like if it was going to be put in Abington, you'd want it to follow Abington's master plan. And it needs to follow a significant traffic study. Because I don't know if, if anybody here has driven down Long Pond Road at 3:00 PM when school lets out, but you're not going anywhere anytime soon. So the proposal I saw doubled the capacity of Long Pond Road, which would be a good thing, but it's a balance. Like I said, I've only seen a wave top proposal. I got about a 20-minute brief on, on it. And from what I saw, it had a lot of good features. But I, you know, I look at it with a, with kind of a, you know, a little bit of skepticism too, because developers promise a lot of things. So this 40R project wouldn't, could possibly be good for not just the town of Plymouth, but it would benefit the other 27 communities by providing a revenue stream, separate from the Registry of Deeds, which is your primary revenue stream right now. And, and I think that's important to have somebody that can work with all of the boards, every, everybody on every board. And again, whether they like me or not, they know me, they respect me, and they know my word's good.
The thing about a candidate who is new to a race is a fresh look at certain things and new ideas. What do you have for new ideas that could be incorporated to the county commissioners or on the county level?
I actually, I have a whole bunch. I'm only going to focus on a couple of them because, you know,
Cherry pick a few.
Yeah. Cause you know I can talk, Kevin. County Animal Rescue. So if you look at most of the towns in the, in the county, they're, they're smaller towns. The city of Brockton's a very large community. Abington's a good-sized community. Plymouth's a large community. But most of them are small, you know, bedroom communities. And they probably have one animal control person or maybe a part-time animal control person. So I love, I love dogs. I have two labs. They, they are the best thing in the world. I have a 10-month-old lab puppy. When my alarm goes off, he jumps on the bed and starts licking me. And it's like the best way to start your day. Cause there's nothing more therapeutic than something with fur and four legs, you know, whether it's a cat, a dog, bunny, whatever. So you have this need of a service throughout the county, especially in the small towns, you know, in Halifax, Hanson, all these other places. And then you have the county as this large, that can reach across the municipal borders, that can bridge those, those municipal, you know, lines and regionalize a service, partner with a 501(c)(3). And like they have, in Plymouth, they have the Friends of the Plymouth Pound. It's a 501(c)(3). They help out. They bring money in. They help with the vet bills and the food and all that other stuff. And really provide a regional service. And, and the, the dual edge to that, that service is if you write Plymouth County Animal Rescue on the side of the building, people are going to see Plymouth County. They say, oh, I know what Plymouth County does. It does, it, it kind of steps out of the shadows as this invisible layer of government and provides a valuable service to all 27 communities. And again, and the best part of this is it wasn't even my idea. I am a strong believer that the constituents have the best ideas and that I can be a facilitator or a conduit for these ideas. And so we got to, it's a great idea that, you know, like I said, we got to see how it works in practical application. We'd have, we have to have a study committee, you know, a steering committee. You know, when I'm elected, I want to, you know, form a steering committee and a study committee, reach out to all 27 communities, say, hey, is this something that you want to participate in? Cause you can't make them participate. And then if it is, let's bring people who know about adoption of animals, who worked in rescues, who do all that, who know one, what type of facility it needs, but also the rules that it has to follow. So I see myself as a facilitator and a conduit for that idea. Another idea that wasn't mine that somebody brought to me was a great idea is a Plymouth County Agricultural School. So if you live in Abington and, is Abington right to farm? I think it is.
That's a good question.
I think, I think it is. I'm not positive. So if, but if you want to send somebody, you know, like somebody's kid wants to go to an agricultural school, you have to pay Norfolk or Bristol $20,000 per year, per student, and Abington has to provide the transportation. Transportation is the hidden cost of education. And, and that's kind of what, what Brockton had a huge problem with. And that's why Brock, part of, part of why Brockton's in such a huge deficit with their schools is because of the transportation costs.
They would have got a, they, they went out and bought buses.
So yeah, well, that's a rabbit hole we won't go down.
No, no, I'll say.
But like I said, so my idea isn't just, isn't let's build this, you know, an agricultural school because there is, there is a need. But you have horticulturists, South Shore, Votech and Hanover. You have, a county owns a farm. And then you have the blue economy across the harbor from us over in Duxbury where they're oyster farming and shell fishing and all that other stuff. So I, what I want to do is a feasibility study. Is this, is this project feasible? Is this something that can, can bring in money, you know, to be supported under the educational funds from the state, all that other stuff? And is it something that all the communities, you know, we'd have to study how many town, how many students from each town go to an ag school and see if this, if the need is there. So again, not, not my idea, but a great idea. And all I want to do is spend about $100,000 on a feasibility study. If the study says it's not feasible, then it's not. If it says we need to move forward, then we look at that too. So that solar, new revenue streams, there's, there's a host of things that I want to do. When I retired, they don't tell you, you don't get paid for three months. So because your last day there, they cash you out and you actually have to build time in the retirement system before you deserve a check. And then there's all the paperwork that has to happen. So when I retired in December, I don't know anybody that can go two or three months without a check. I was lucky, it was only about nine weeks, but I had to develop new revenue streams. So I downloaded the Uber app. I was driving people all around for a while. I had gotten my EMT, so I got a job working on the ambulance, part-time, which has turned more into like part slash full. But if I can create new revenue streams for myself, why can't we create new revenue streams for the county? And I'm not saying I have all these ideas. I'm saying the constituents, you need to listen to them and listen to their ideas and then facilitate the good ones.
How instrumental, how important is the 4H program in the county?
Oh, it's hugely, it's a, it's a very under-advertised but important program. And, and that takes place on the county farm, which is another reason why, you know, we need to, we need to take care of this farm. For the people in Abington who don't know, there was a large bone of contention between the town and the county years back about the county farm. And the town of Plymouth purchased, purchased an agricultural restriction on the farm. I think it's like 99 years or something like that. But it can only be used for agricultural slash farming animals, that kind of stuff. So that program, you know, takes place on the farm. And if you go to the Marshfield Fair, you'll see the 4H program over there. But it's, like I said, it's an under-advertised, hugely important program that the county runs.
Is there any other county programs that are underutilized and aren't promoted enough that maybe if you are elected, you would do your best to shine a little light on said programs?
And the, the county does do a lot of stuff. And, you know, it has the parking ticket program where it administrates, administers the parking tickets for the, for the smaller towns, the MBTA, that kind of stuff. So there are, you know, a lot of little projects that I don't think are advertised enough to gain more stakeholders in it. But I think that the, the biggest and most important thing is to be responsive to the people who put you in that position. And so, I mean, I mean, we go way back. So you know, if you text me, I'm answering, you're right back. I've had people texting me and emailing me and Facebook messaging me about the campaign. And, and I, I answer them, you know, as quickly as I can. Because those people are the ones who say, hey, look, you know, I have this idea for this program and I'd like to share it with you. You know, I've been very fortunate that people have been sending me pictures of their mail-in ballots with my name filled in, or just texting me, you know, asking about my stances on different things. But as, as a candidate and throughout my whole life, I mean, my contact information is my contact information. It's going to, if you, if I give you my cell phone number, it's my cell phone number. So I'm going to text you back or call you back. And I think that's the most important thing in an elected official is to be responsive. Because that was one of the things they told us early on in law school, is nothing makes a client more upset than not answering them.
Yeah. Okay. We are at that point of our program where I ask you if there's anything we haven't touched upon during our conversation that you may want to take a moment to talk about, or maybe there's something we did talk about, but maybe you might want to add additional information to.
The, I think, you know, my, my bio, I'm an attorney, you know, I, I've been, I'm a practicing attorney. I have extensive legal knowledge. I think that that comes in handy in an elected official, that you kind of know where to steer things. So they don't, you don't wind up spending a ton of money in legal expenses, having, having an attorney fix something that the, the board has gone askew with. My, my lifetime of public service, my experience as, as a leader of gunnery sergeant of Marines in Iraq, I mean, if I can lead a, lead a scout sniper platoon in combat, I'm pretty sure I can lead the county commission. And, you know, just the fact that I'm in this for the right reason. I'm in this to, to, to do a good job, to do, be altruistic. Trust me, I have more titles than I know what to do with. I was actually, I was, I was knighted into the Order of the Knights Templar. I'm, I'm a Freemason. And I finished York Rite and they made me Sir Knight. So I have more titles than I know what to do with, whether it's Esquire, Sir Knight, or, you know, all these other things, Sergeant, gunnery sergeant. I'm not in, I'm not in this looking for, to be important. I'm in this to do the right thing and to do what the constituents want me to do and be as responsive to the, to the voters as I can.
Final question, and that is if folks want to find out more information about Scott Vekki, website, social media platforms, please share.
So if you would like to find more out about me, my website is vote, the number four, vekki.org. It's V O T E, the number four, V E C C H I dot org. I'm on Facebook as the Committee to Elect Scott Vekki. I'm on Instagram as scott.m.vekki. And I'll tell you my cell phone number, 781-706-5726. You can email me, the info@voteforveki, it's forwarded to my, my personal email. If you want that too, it's scott.vekki@gmail.com. And I, there's a good question for you. How many of those people, elected officials are going to give you their personal cell phone and their personal email? That's, that's what I bring to the table as, as a, as a elected person.
Well, I want to thank you very much for joining us and sharing a little bit about yourself and your campaign.
And in parting, I would just like to ask, I need your help. Please, on September 3rd, go to the polls. I ask humbly and respectfully for one of your two votes and help me, help me 3rd, go to the polls. I ask humbly and respectfully for one of your two votes, and help me make a difference. Help me become the next county commissioner. Thank you. And thank you for having me, Kevin.
Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
You got it. We want to thank you for tuning into programs like this, Community Chat. The idea is, again, to keep you better informed about some of the things that are going on in and around the community of Abington. Now, if you have an idea for guests or topics, info@abingtoncamp.tv, that's the way. And until our next chat, have a great day.